Alderman Woods. Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Chalky. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay, Coram present. Need a motion to approve the minutes of January 24th, 2013?
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, report and recommendation, CIP, that's the final. Who wants to take this? Jeff or Brett? This is the equipment replacement.
Yes, before we get into the CIP, I just had one quick item of interest. I know there's been some talk of doing a joint meeting with ATASC. The two tentative dates are March 2nd, which is a Saturday, or March 16th. Those are two dates that ATASC has already circled in their calendars, so if we can pick one of those dates moving forward.
Actually, I just saw Mayor Prime, and I told him if it has to be March 2nd, I just found out today I won't be able to make that meeting. The 16th would work, he goes either way, so I'm not sure how the council feels.
We don't have a time or anything like that, I was just trying to make a quick mention of it because it's come up a couple of times.
Right, they were talking about a morning meeting.
We'll lock something in in the coming weeks.
Alderman Woods, 16th, sounds good. Christine, 16th? Not sure?
Like I said, I just wanted to mention it, we'll work it out later. And getting into the CIP, we'll get to what's on the screen here in a moment, just wanted to go back to some of the questions or points of clarification from the meeting last week. There was a question on the alleys, particularly the alley behind the Legion. Going back through our notes, the reason there wasn't any coordination with Bensonville before was Bensonville has apparently vacated their portion of the alley, and our notes indicate that it's basically a little more than just a driveway access point. At this point, it's not a through alley, it doesn't really go anywhere, and Bensonville's vacated their half. That's why nothing ever went anywhere with Bensonville, and since it was perceived as just a driveway access point, the city didn't really pursue it any further than that. So I was with that one. The bike bridge, we've gone through and found some pretty solid documentation that the city is the proud owner of the pedestrian bridge connecting the two paths. We have talked to Mr. Flure from BMW on the cost, and the $10,000 would be, as long as there's nothing significantly wrong, would be more than enough to cover the visual inspection at this time. And the bridge is under 10 years old, so there's not really a thought that there's going to be a lot going on with it, but just do some due diligence on it every so often. Wood Lane Court question came up, and I know there was some commentary about perhaps helping Royal Oaks, et cetera, but I'm going to turn over to Mr. Flure for a little more clarification on that.
Yeah, we did take a look at Wood Lane Court to see if we could use it to benefit Royal Oaks. Unfortunately, it's five feet higher in elevation than the Royal Oaks Pond, so there really wouldn't be an economical way of utilizing that short of pumping water over there. We don't feel that that's feasible. The $20,000 was put into the CIP a while back because Public Works staff had suggested that maybe we could do something there to reduce the city's maintenance costs mowing that area, and so we had suggested maybe turning it into a rain garden with some modified, hauling in some modified soil, and using it as both an educational rain garden and then also that would reduce the maintenance on the city's part. So whether or not that's needed, probably not, so we would recommend just to remove that, the $20,000 from the CIP unless the city's interested in moving forward with a rain garden or something similar to that.
Alderman Wesley.
So do we need directions to remove the $20,000? I mean, if we aren't going to do anything, we could always revisit it when it comes down. I mean, this council's going to make a decision day now, but I mean, I recommend we remove the $20,000 then.
Brett, you might answer. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I mean, if there's a consensus that not to go in that direction, then so like I mentioned last week, that's been in there for four years, it's been kind of getting punted every year, so if there's no real intention to go that way, then certainly we can just take it out at that point.
I got a question for Jason real quick. Basically, when that subdivision goes in, right now there's only one house back there, but when all those other houses go in, and it does have a pond of its own, I don't know, we might need that extra storage space if we make it this rain garden. Are we going to be able to utilize it then for a pond?
Yeah, rain garden would naturally store a little bit of water, not as much as in its present state. We did take a look at this maybe a year ago and look at the change to the water drainage system due to the development, and determined that it's not being used right now, and it's not needed, so.
Alderman Winger, go ahead.
If we do want to do the rain garden though, and have it, you know, posted with different foliage and what it is, maybe perhaps it could be looked at as tourism, like you said, an educational display, and then we'd be improving the community as well. So if we decide to go the rain garden way, we may not want to take it out of our list of things to do, but more or less look for different funding sources like tourism.
Alderman Lazara.
If we do the rain garden, and then we would need that for water in the future, would that be an expensive proposition to do?
I don't believe so. I believe it'd just be removing some of the plants, and maybe you'd have to remove some of the modified soil that was brought in.
Okay.
I don't know for sure.
Yeah, so converting it back would be fine then, alright.
So if we leave it in here, and it's been in here a couple of years, and we don't use it, I mean, it's not going to hurt anything as far as... Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Is it slated in this year's CIP to be used?
Correct, it is programmed in this year's CIP.
So my recommendation then, my recommendation is that we push it back a couple more years because till we see what's going on up there.
Yeah, but just putting it in the plan doesn't oblige you to actually do anything. It's been in the present year for four years now. So every year, it's just been punted down.
I have sat up here several years, and every time a CIP project comes up, or we decide go out that way, we go, well, it's in the CIP so we can spend the money. My opinion is, if we aren't going to do anything this year, and we're going to postpone it this, right now, push it back. Don't put it in this year's project. Unless this council's ready to plant in a garden now, then leave it there. If not, push it back, because I know what's going to happen. I know exactly what's going to happen.
Alderman Lazara.
What do you think that garden would cost for us to do?
That's the $20,000, that's our estimate for that.
Alderman Coles.
Is this the two retention ponds you're going to turn over into a garden? Six and seven?
There's a Flure.
It's just the one detention pond. It's about mid-block on Wood Lane Court.
I'm talking about Wood Lane Court, yeah.
Right, on the south.
You've got six and seven, and then you have eight. Eight is good flat land.
I don't know for sure which number.
You want to change that over to a rain garden?
I don't know which number for sure it is. It's about mid-block on Wood Lane, on the south side of the road.
I know where it is. It's halfway down the street, it's on the south side of the street.
Correct.
It's hooked up to Ethan Woods' retention pond. You're going to change that over to a rain garden?
We were just asked by Public Works about a year ago if there was anything that we could do to reduce the cost of the city's maintenance cost, and that was one of our ideas.
Well, them were retention ponds in the first place, that's the reason they put them in there. Now you're going to change them over. And what happens if you need them, and you have a rain garden in there, you're going to have people up here that are not up here now, and they're going to say, oh, I don't want that changed over, yet that's what it was originally for. You're going to run into trouble. I mean, you're trying to stop what they were made for in the first place. We have retention ponds that don't get any water in them now, and they're just weed factories. And these, at least, you can mow the grass in these without no trouble at all. It only takes a few minutes with the mower, because they're always dry. So, and it looks nice when it's cut. No, I'm sort of against this. I'm sorry, I'm sort of against the rain garden in them, because you're going to need them eventually. Somewhere along the line, you're going to need them, and we're going to have them.
Alderman Winger.
Is its current state helping with flood mitigation whatsoever now currently? And then secondly, what are we paying in maintenance cost per year?
I couldn't answer what the maintenance cost per year. As far as being used for stormwater currently, we did a study on it, and we found that it's not being utilized, and that was one of the, that's the reason why we thought about some different options for it.
I'll make a comment. I think that Tall Oaks Pond, if I remember right, was costing us about $1,500 a year to mow and maintain. This one's maybe a quarter of that pond, so it's got to be less than $1,500.
Okay.
Alderman Woods.
How come the pond isn't doing anything? I mean, we built it, I'm assuming that there was a reason for it, and that it would accept water, how come it's dry now?
I'd have to go back and take a look at the drainage study that we did, but I believe because of some of the development to the south, some of the drainage patterns, or the way the drainage system was somehow altered, is my understanding.
That pond used to have water with an air raider and a lift station.
Right.
Then, when they built the new subdivision, they put in the new pond, and I know a lot of the neighbors were complaining that we had to go out and level the old pond because we were getting puddles of water, and we were getting a lot of mosquitoes in the area. So we finally cleaned that up and leveled it off, but ever since then, it's been dry. And Alderman Lazara, you had another question?
I'd have to agree with Eugene. I think we should take it out of the CIP and just, you know, kick it back. Yeah.
Okay, they got direction. Alright, go ahead.
Sure, just confirming the engineering of the Ward Two Streets. We were going to move up into fiscal year 14 instead of fiscal year 15. There was a question about Forest Preserve Drive. I know that was Alderman R. Wesley, he's not here, but we can still address it on camera for you with Forest Preserve Drive, and why it's kind of so far down in the study now.
Go ahead, Jason.
Yes, I took a look at it, and Forest Preserve was originally slated for FY '16, however, with the streets around Salt Creek that we decided to try to get finished, Forest Preserve was one of the streets that was pushed back, so it was pushed back to '18. I took a look at the streets that are in front of it in the previous years, and those streets are either in worse condition or at least the same, so there's not really any logical streets that shouldn't be there. But I did drive it today, and I see that towards Addison Road, I believe on the north side, there's a pretty long stretch that the surface is in pretty bad condition, so, you know, maybe as an interim improvement, we should do a surface patch on that as part of the road program, and maybe that would get us through a few more years until it's scheduled for resurfacing.
Okay, anything on that? Go ahead.
There was some conversation on the new sidewalk connecting the two bike paths on Addison Road, and there was some direction to install the fence as soon as we could. Waiting until May 1st, when the new budget year kicks in, would mean that we couldn't begin to design or permit that until May 1st, so installing the fence in the early spring, as was requested, wouldn't technically be possible due to the permitting and design process. So if you were to want to get the fence installed earlier to work with the permitting, we would have to move ahead with that before May 1st, to work with the county to get the permitting done, to figure out what we'd need to do to actually get that fence put in there.
Alderman Winger.
Is there an area in the budget that we could do the amendment and start work on this? In this current year?
Yeah, I wouldn't think that, just that little bit of design and the permit would be that significant a cost, surely not the whole amount of money that's in there, probably... Yeah, I mean, there should be enough in there to absorb that nominal amount to get that going.
Well, then I want to see us look for the amendment and do the work now. It really is a safety issue when you whack that area.
Sorry.
I say do the amendment and get started now.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Let me back up here. The sidewalks on Addison Road. That's the sidewalk we're talking about, right? We did not, that was a, that's a county sidewalk. We, I don't think we put those sidewalks in. I think that was a county project, and when Bill Mayo was around, that Bill Mayo pushed to get those sidewalks there. I don't think it was our sidewalk that we put in. I don't think we used any city money to put those sidewalks in. I want to say that was a county project. When Bill Mayo was around in the county, he pushed to get that through. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think we need to go back and see, and believe me, I know the safety concern, I have no problem, but maybe we approached the county, since if they did put those sidewalks in, but we'll go ahead and put in, but I just, we're going to have to pull a permit regardless, and it's going to have to be on county, because I believe that's county's property. Because Addison Road is not even our supply.
Do you want to, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I would say, I mean, you're correct that it's not our road, and that's not our right-of-way or anything, which is why we would need to get work on the design with the county, and if that might even be Forest Preserve, I'm not really sure, to work on the permit to see what they would need for us to even do that. And so, so you're correct, but our concern was there was a push to get it installed as soon as possible, and unless we advance that, we're not going to be able to get it in as soon as we would, so.
Good, you fellow.
But yes, we're planning on working with the county.
And I have no problem doing that, but now we adding another part of sidewalk on that right away. Have we approached in the CIP, I believe, that short part, right, Mr. Woods? So are we just going to do that without county's blessing, even though it's going but against county sidewalk? Or are we just going to do it ourselves?
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, no, that's, no, that's what I just said, we'd have to advance the design and working with the county to coordinate that with the county.
Just for the railing? Or are we blocking sidewalk too?
Well, the sidewalk's part of the project, but the initial concern was to try to get a railing up before, you know, to not hold up the railing for the sidewalk.
And I understand that, but again...
So the initial thrust would be for some railing, for some safety mechanism there, while obviously still working towards the whole sidewalk.
That's fine.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I don't have the whole history of who put the sidewalk in. All I know is there isn't a sidewalk, and it's well-traveled by the residents of Wooddale, and it's a safety issue. I'm sure that we have to deal with, you know, whether it's Addison, or the county, or the Forest Preserve. They ran a bike path and stopped, they seemed to not have any interest, so in an effort to make it safe for the residents of the city, like I say, it's well-traveled, I think we need to put in the money to do it, and of course, we'll have to work with the county or the township, or whoever's controlling agency of that road, but we do need to move forward on it.
Alderman Winger, did you have something else before I...
No, I covered it, yeah.
Okay.
Then could I address the sidewalks in putting CIP along Foster Avenue then, walking to the Park District? That is a concern too, that the people walk in the middle of the street to get to the Park District? I mean, if we're going to do that, we might well look at that too. In the CIP. I mean, because you, the kids walk home from school, and they walk in the middle of Foster, there's no sidewalks there. So I mean, if we're really going to look at the issue, and believe me, I'm not against the project on Addison Road, and don't think I am, but if now we bring up the safety issue, then you might well look at Foster Avenue putting sidewalks in too, and county out, and let's just put those in too then. I mean... Because they do, and you, you know they walk from the school over there, so you might well put sidewalks on Foster Avenue then too.
Alderman Woods.
Let's put that in the CIP.
If that's definitely a concern or a safety issue, I would agree. I mean, we need to take care of it. We can't wait for somebody else to take care of the issues in Wooddale that are safety issues. We have to step up and take care of it for ourselves.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I guess, a point of clarification or direction, do you want us to work with BMW on that for this coming year then? Or for the next year? Just try to get into this year if we can? Just looking for some direction this year, next year? Just trying to make sure we address it in an appropriate fashion.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
I'm in favor of doing a push, get the Addison Road done for a safety issue, but I expect in the CIP for this year that we're going past, is that we look at what it's going to cost for Foster Avenue. And maybe we got to adjust the CIP now, and see what it's going to cost. We got to work on county, you know, if that's the case. I mean, now, you know, you're doing that, and let's get the Addison Road off the ground. I, no problem, but then you better put the Foster Avenue on track for this year.
Mr. Murmish.
How about we look into the Foster Avenue prices and plug it somewhere into the CIP where, you know, fits appropriately, so we don't have to, you know, get crazy and switch everything around, we have to look at fund balances per year. So we'll add it in somewhere in the CIP, I don't know if we can guarantee next year unless we start plugging other things into other years, so I mean, we could drastically change depending on prices. The Addison Road, we've already plugged in.
But we already moved $20,000 out there, so might well put $20,000 for, start the engineering on it then. I mean, how much is it going to cost to engineer it?
We don't know anything yet, that's what I'm saying, I want to commit to we're going to put it in next year, that's all I'm saying.
When we're talking about Foster Avenue, basically, we're talking from Wooddale Road or the Park District to where? Going all the way to Central? They got, they're going to need some type of direction. Do we know that?
I say you might well go all the way from Wooddale Road all the way down to Spruce. That's all our city. Go from borderline to borderline.
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah. I believe, do you want... We'll throw together some options, and then we'll plug it in with some rough price quotes, no problem.
Alderman Roy Wesley. And I'll defer to you since you're the vice chair of finance. You could take over the meeting.
Thank you. And we're talking that little strip on Addison Road, right? I apologize for being late. Have we sent an email to Don Potowski or Paul Fitner to see if the counties could get this done faster for us? As anyone? I'm right here.
I defer.
Go ahead.
I don't remember where you came into the conversation, but that was, the main thrust of bringing this back up tonight was absent direction to move forward sooner. We would have had to have waited to May 1st to work on this, because it's ineffective for this budget year. There was a consensus on the other end of the dais to move forward with this sooner, so as long as that consensus holds, then Baxton Woodman will begin to work on that. I don't want to commit Mr. Flure to anything, but probably next week they'll start to work on it, so.
How much is the sidewalk to do?
The entire project is...
Not the entire project, just the sidewalk. And maybe the rail.
Yeah, I mean, the construction was listed as $45,000.
$45,000. I think we could contact our county reps, and, I mean, Don Potowski is in charge of Department of Transportation, Paul Fitner is the chairman of finance, between the two of them, they should be able to get something.
Certainly.
So who's going to do that? Don't look at me, I'll do my share, but...
Yeah, I mean, that would be...
I can call Mr. Frickner.
Yeah, we'll work with the mayor and Baxton Woodman to make sure we get everything going in the right direction.
Okay. Alderman Wesley.
Well, before you joined us, we decide to go ahead with the fence right now, take a, put through a budget amendment to put that safety fence up, so that is our goal, to do that.
Well, I hope, that's fine.
And then we would look at the sidewalk down the line, but the main concern now is a safety fence going up.
Sure.
So we decide to, I believe Christine Winger recommended that we take money out of this year's budget, start the process of going forward with that fence now. Am I pretty much right? So...
I take it it will be done this spring. Jason?
Yeah, and that was the whole point of getting approval to start it before May 1st, was to hopefully get it up in a timely fashion for the spring.
But...
That's the goal.
What's his name? Lou. Says he didn't know if it could get done this spring, and it will get done this spring. I want to make it perfectly clear, it will get done this spring. Alderman Winger, did you have a question? Are you stretching Alderman Woods, or one question?
I have a question.
Okay.
With the directive you just gave, are we doing it, or are you telling us we're going to have the county have it done by spring? Because those two things won't be parallel, they won't...
I understand that. As a council, we have to look at the safety issue first for our residents. So for the rail to go up, fine, then the county could come in and say, okay, we'll pay for the sidewalk, at least try to get something.
And I agree. I actually talked to Pachowski when they were doing the bike path to try to get it through. He said they absolutely, at that time, wouldn't put the sidewalk in because it was in the floodway. They had absolutely no desire when they were doing Addison Road. I inquired again to try to get it done, figuring we could team it up, and again was told that you can't do it. And the problem that brought it back to the table is now, with the road getting done, and some of the other work in the right of way that was done over there, the water lines or whatever, it's changed the topography over there to where it's a little narrower and steeper, you know, accelerating the safety issues over there. So I'm on board with if we could get the county or somebody else to pay for it, but it needs to get done one way or the other.
And that point, I would say let's take the pictures, send it to the county, and if they sit there and say no again, what a Daily Herald would probably like those pictures, and so the residents would know what's going on. So most likely, they would say yes. One way or another. And I'm saying to still go forward, but let's see if they could throw some money in on this too. I'm sure Baxton Woodman has worked with the county before. So... Yes, we... I'll let Christine Winger, just, since I wasn't here, just take it from there.
Okay, now, Mr. Wilson, would you like to do input before a motion is made? Mr. Wilson?
I mean, I was just going to say, I mean, we have the direction to move forward with it. Yeah, I mean, we can do a full-blown formal budget amendment for the $10,000. Historically, when we've advanced stuff, we typically have had savings on other projects throughout the year, so we haven't gone over the aggregate budget. So I don't know at this point that a budget amendment, a pure budget amendment is specifically necessary at this point, but we have given direction to advance the funding on it, and so if we run in... And so, if we run into a case where we need to do a budget amendment, certainly we'll come back. But for the, for probably not even the $10,000, I don't specifically think that would be necessary.
I see.
As long as we have, as long as we have the direction.
Okay, and Mr. Murmish can approve the extension of the budget amendment, like when it's like $10,000, this sort of thing. Correct?
The transfer, yeah. If it was over $10,000, then, then we'd have some other issues, but since it's going to be under,
Got it.
we can, we can make it work.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll hand it back to you, Alderman Wesley.
So, we're done with this thing now, right? For the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, now I'm caught up. Where are we?
Recap of open items from the last meeting.
What page?
We're now on the key fob topic. Those, the, want to put the key fobs on all the doors in the treatment plant. And we're going to work on, with Chief and then the various vendors to make sure that those get added to the, to the new treatment plant facility.
How about a page number? Or we're just doing, or just all recaps?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last one I have is getting back to you on the equipment use for the GIS in the vehicles. I know we said three weeks, but we've, we've got it worked up a little bit quicker. After looking at the usefulness of different apparatus, we've come around to a test program for this coming year. And the approximate cost to get that test program up, as it's been designed over the last week or so, is about $6,000 for the, for the pilot program for the Public Works Department. So, I know originally $10,000 was floated, but it looks like it'd be about six based upon how it's been designed over the last week.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Question for you guys on the GIS, does that mean training all the public works guys that it works? Or who, who are we training or who are we not training? Who, what pilot program are we talking?
Anything going to help?
Sure.
Are we talking about Water Department too, because that's part of GIS? I mean, is that $6,000 training all the guys that need to use that? I know that ain't counting the equipment that we're looking by.
Sure, I'm going to defer to Mr. Gallus on this one.
The $6,000 covers a cost to purchase four iPads and provide the necessary service for those iPads to be utilized remotely. So, that, that's point number one. Point number two is that the four people identified to receive those devices include the locator. That's, and, and that could be a variety of different people, as you suggest. The water staff that would potentially be out fixing water main breaks. George Goodhue, who obviously is our crew leader in streets, so that he has that device available to him when he's out doing the things that he does. And then one from me as well. So, it would be those four positions utilizing the iPads. And the training cost would be minimal. That would be something that I would coach the individual people through using the GIS system. So, I hope that answers your question.
I do one follow-up, please. My, my question with, I really think we need to look at the contract that we signed with the GIS system. I believe at one time, when we approved that contract, I believe training our personnel to use the GIS was in the contract. I could be wrong, but I thought it was. So, we need to double-check that. And my question is, if you're only going to train those people, what happens if one of those guys go out, get sick? Then does that mean the laptop, iPad goes off the side because no one else knows how to use it? I just, I mean, if we're going to spend this money on this GIS, and I've been the big push for the GIS, we're spending this money, my suggestion is to go back and just not train one guy for each department. Maybe take four guys on the street department, take four guys in the water department, train them all together. I just don't want one guy be only, be able to access this laptop or iPad to do this because if he's out sick or something, we have no one else. We need a backup plan. And I would suggest that we go back and look at the contract because maybe I'm losing it up here because I'm a little old, but I thought it said that it was in the contract. I could be wrong though, but I would like, like that that gets looked at.
You want to respond to that? You had your hand up, or were you stretching?
I, I was, I did have one more comment I wanted to offer. I, I hope you'll think of this as, you know, four positions. But there are multiple people that serve in the same position. So, multiple people will be locating. So, anyone who will do locating services will be required to get some training on that. The system that we have purchased is as simple as using Google Maps. You, you click on some things and it's a Google map that also identifies the locations of the city's critical infrastructure. So, the training that is required for the folks to utilize the system is perhaps a little bit more simple than you might at first glance believe. So, I believe that through some assistance from Baxter and Woodman and some leadership from myself, that I can get the right people to utilize it and, and do that with the four devices that I'm asking for. So, I was looking for, asking for a minimal amount of equipment and then training a maximum amount of people to use that minimum amount of equipment.
Okay, you got to wait, no. Allman Winger.
Thank you. Two things. Firstly, that before we actually go forward, and we're saying that in this year, we're going to get iPads or in next budget year.
The fiscal '14, so sometime after May 1st of this calendar year.
Okay, because I want to have the conversation of GIS and its maintenance and the work order system and its maintenance expenses on an annual basis before we buy iPads and do training and that sort of thing. And then, so, so it sounds like that's going to be feasible because we're going to have that conversation at our next committee meeting, correct? GIS and its maintenance cost and the work order system and its, and its maintenance cost? Or are we going to have that today, tonight? Yeah.
Okay, question. Go ahead, Brad. Answer a question.
Couple of different questions, and give me one second here.
Yeah, two or three weeks. It's like next...
Or would the city manager like to, he's whispering, sweet nothings, I don't know. Go ahead.
We did, we did go over that briefly last week. We've got the more concrete, like, maintenance costs versus system cost. I had Brad look that up, so we do have those numbers, so we can touch on some of those numbers tonight, stemming from our conversation last week. He's just trying to locate it on his paperwork. We didn't memorize the numbers.
Okay. Allman, what, any questions, what is done, aren't you?
No, I was just verifying something with Mr. Flure before I answered.
Well, I thought Jeff'd answer your question.
Oh.
Did he answer your question?
With regards to the GIS system, the recurring maintenance fee on the GIS system is approximately $6,000 a year for the GIS system itself. There would be in addition to, and this was, part of this was already built into the, the cost in the CIP, a mobile access cost where they wouldn't turn on the connectivity for all the mobile devices and get them set up. And actually, there's a, a training line item in that cost estimate as well, which we would go back and look at certainly to see if it was previously included. That cost is $10,000 to turn, to turn that on for the GIS, to get everybody trained. And that would, that's just a one-time cost. Yeah. And then on the city work side of things, the recurring costs are probably between $16,000 and $17,000 a year for maintenance and updates, data backup, data retention, things of that nature.
Yeah, so, so we're looking at $24,000 a year to, to maintain these systems?
I mean, both of them, a little more than, just over 24, correct?
Okay, so, so then I'd like to be resold on the, the work order system. I realize GIS is where we're at, we need to be there. But the work order system, we've been functioning for years without it. So, how is it really going to benefit us and what are other communities doing?
Go ahead.
I can answer kind of some of, I think, where you're going with it. The reoccurring cost is not something extraordinary. For example, for our Microsoft Office licensing or our Springbrook licensing, you know, those are between 10 and 16 grand per year, every year. So, it's not like this is out of the ordinary as far as the functionality of the city work system. Andy Zalatell from Baxter and Woodman is the actual author of that system and he's our, he's the guy that integrates that. Jason's more of the transportation end of things or Stormwater. So, he's not going to be able to answer the city works component of it. Maybe Mr. Gallus can touch on it, you know, mile high, but Andy is, I'm sure you met Andy before. He's the guy that can get in-depth on it. So, he's not here tonight, so I don't know how in-depth you want to get.
I'm more interested in the mile high from our staff on why it's important for us. So, I think Mr. Gallus would be what I'm looking for in terms of explanation.
Just let me give you some brief perspective, maybe from another community because I, you know, I haven't really gathered enough information in terms of this community as it, as it relates to that. But other communities use a work order system so that they can document what work is being performed every day and how staff are being utilized. That's a phenomenon that is not new to public works. It's not new to construction companies. It's not new to, new to engineering companies. It's something that I think is, you know, in 2013 is the way that I would say the vast majority of organizations go about doing that. If you, if you think about it, we've got 200, 300 miles of pipe in the ground. We've got B-boxes, all this other infrastructure that when we work on it and we replace it, electronic records are very powerful. You can call on those records and understand when somebody went there, when they did the things that they needed to do, and do that really quickly. I think when you're talking about managing the size of a city and the miles and miles of pipe, that these tools in today's world are absolutely essential because the expectation of public works is that they know when the last time they replaced the pipe was. When's the last time they cleaned out the storm sewer? So, I guess in, in 2013, this type of a system is more common than not in, in, in public works. If you were to ask me about the city of St. Charles, they spent considerably more money on their work order system than what we're talking about spending here.
Okay, and, and then I, I know you're relatively new to us, but what are we doing without it? Like, how, how do we do it today?
We keep paper records. And so, that paper record, if we needed to call on that information or if you had a request that said, when was the last time we replaced that, that water main? We would look through files and drawers and try to find that information.
Yeah. Thank you.
Allman Woods?
Yeah, I just want to add one other use is that as all this stuff is documented and easily accessible, it's also accessible to all the engineering firms that we use in an effort to reduce costs and give us the ability to look at projects back and forth and see which ones make the most sense as opposed to going through, you know, rooms and rooms full of cardboard boxes with paper work tickets, trying to figure out who was there, what they did, what did they actually write down? This just gives us the ability to, you know, as the new public works director said, work in 2013. This is how all the firms are working. So, it's, in my opinion, imperative that the city moves forward, you know? Thank you.
Yeah, right, right.
Allman Eugene Wesley.
My question, how much is left in the IT budget for this year? Someone give me ballpark?
Go ahead.
Just to point a clarity, you're talking two different things. This isn't coming out of the general IT budget. This is a specific item within the...
If you're buying iPads for a thing, where would that come from?
I got it, yes, your question. Keep going, Jeff.
We're not buying iPads until after May 1st, which would be within the CIP, what we're talking about now. And that wouldn't be the IT budget.
My question is, when are they going to start to train them?
We'd have to get the iPads first, so sometime after May 1.
Okay. Staff, I appreciate the courtesy, but just go back and forth until we stop is a waste of time. So, I want to move along here. Christine Winger?
Okay, I'll be real brief. I, I, I agree, we need to get to the next topic. So, so I am, you know, convinced, let's continue, go forward with both. But if, if we can adjust the CIP with those numbers accordingly, the $16,000 to $17,000 on the work order system and the $6,000 on the GIS, because in the CIP, it was $30,000 and $30,000, which is, you know, double of what the cost really is. And, and, and just secondly, and then this is my last thing, the, the laptops in the cars to work with GIS, that this was really something that I believe council asked for last week instead of staff saying, this is what we need. So, do we really need this iPad or computer in a car? What was the current plan of implementing this? There had to be a plan that wasn't in the scope of things, so do we really need it?
Sure. I'll address the first part of that, then defer on the other part. Majority of the recurring costs for these programs are already built into the CIP. So, it would be a slight increase for that mobile turn-on. But really, the only significant addition would be the cost of the iPads. So, all the recurring costs were built into those numbers. We can do a better job of breaking those out so that it's a little more clear what component is what. So, we can certainly do that. But aside from the iPads, there really isn't the need to adjust anything because most of that was already built in.
So, are you telling me it is going to be $30,000 a year for each of them?
Well, because there's the recurring cost, the maintenance cost. And then every year, historically, there's been additions to the system. Like this year, we're doing the tree inventory. You know, a couple of years ago, they did all the buffalo boxes, subdivision overlays. So, every year, there, there's new stuff that we can add on. With the city works, we'll do public works first. And if that goes okay, then it'll go into the building department. And then, so it's going to, it's going to grow and be organic as it moves along.
Okay.
As far as what the current plan was, I personally don't know. I don't know if Mr. Gallus would like to comment on, on the current plan.
Yeah.
The, the current plan is that on, by March 18th, we would begin to, as staff and the leadership roles of the staff, begin to utilize city works and utilize the GIS system from our desktop computers. I think, you know, the timeliness of this is... I think, you know, the timeliness of this is helpful, because what we would do then is when the new budget season begins, the management or the leadership in Public Works would have had an opportunity to spend a couple of months familiarizing themselves with not only City Works, but the GIS system and how it functions. So that in May or in June of this upcoming year, then we could transition that to different levels in the organization, and begin to deploy that from a field perspective, and not just a leadership perspective.
So you're saying the laptops were gonna come as a request, once you had a feel for it? Or do most communities operate without the laptops or iPads with GIS?
No, the most communities would operate with either a laptop in the vehicle, or an iPad. And I think after consulting with our IT Director, that the preference is for the iPad. And it has multi-use, rather than confined folks to a laptop.
Okay, thank you.
Alman, Court.
GIS I plan, and all he wanted to do was set it up. So he put all the pipes, and everything would be on a map of the city. And then when they wanted to find out where there was a problem, all they'd do is look it up in the section, and they'd take a picture, take a printer and print out the sheet, and hand it to the men, and say, here's where it was. That was his first idea of the GIS plan. And that's what, that's what he wanted. Now, we're going to, everybody has to have a piece of this. When you guys go out for a job, they find out where the thing is. They hit the, they hit the machine, they look up on the street that it is, they can hook it up. They can get a piece of paper out of the printer, and they have their sheet with them right there. And so, I mean, now we're talking about getting an iPad for everybody, training everybody. That isn't what they, what they originally wanted the GIS section for. It was for to get all the pipes, get all the sewer pipes, all the water pipes, all the pipes that are in the ground, that belong to Wooddale, the city of Wooddale. And for they know where they all were, and they could, any repairs could be done, they had where it was. That was the, that was the originally reason that he wanted that. And that was quite a few years ago. Now, now we're talking about having guys run around with iPads. You know guys, they're gonna drop iPads, they're gonna, they're gonna be in the mud. They're gonna, the guy's gonna, oh, here it is. And the next thing you know, boom, down into the muddy water, and stuff like that. So, I don't know. A piece of paper like this is just as good as having an iPad, where it's busted anyway, they could find out right away. All they gotta do is know where the section of the city is. And I'm certainly sure the guys that do all the repair work through the pipes and stuff, know where every section of the city is. I know you could take Eddie, and I bet you Eddie can tell you where every pipe that's in the ground, around here. He knows where everything is. He's fixed about every, in 19 or 20 years he's been here, he's fixed about every pipe that they had around. So I mean, you, you're arguing about iPads. I think it's a waste of money. Waste of money. That's all I got.
Eddie probably installed every pipe in the city too. He's been here so long. Anything else? Okay. So, what are you looking for? To buy these iPads, or? Nothing, right now.
I think we'll put the number in the CIP, and then move forward, and after May 1st, move forward, as Mr. Gallus indicated, with the pilot program.
So do you want to take, do you want to vote from this council on that, or just put it in?
I don't need to vote. I think as long as everyone's comfortable, our majority's comfortable with the $6,000 figure. We'll just take that direction and put that in, as long as there's a majority consensus for that number.
Okay. As most of us are. If not, forever hold your peace, so, okay. Put it in.
Okay. And that was the last thing from the wrap-up from last week. So now we'll get to the new section of the book, that.
Alman Wesley, do you want to say something?
Could I visit the desk again?
The chief's desk?
Well, I'm just asking, do we have to do all the desks at once? Or could we do half this year in the CIP, and half next year? I'm just asking. Because you know what we're gonna be?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
25 years down the line here, we're gonna be back here. I probably won't be here on the council, asking for all new desks again. Can't we do half and half? I'm just asking.
Hang on here. Greg. Okay.
The desks weren't scheduled for this year's CIP. I believe they're two years off.
That's fine, thank you.
I can't believe we're talking about desk. I understand that, if we have to go half and half, we'll do half and half. Whatever, if the chief could deal with half a desk, then we'll give him half a desk. Go ahead.
So we're under the new part. And what we talked about last week and wrapped up this week is the Capital Projects Fund, the O-41 and the O-65 in our budgets. These remaining 11 pages, I believe it is, is the Equipment Replacement Fund, where, 65 of the hard copy, yeah? 68 of the electronic copy. And so, the Equipment Replacement Fund is where we account for the vehicle purchases, the Public Works vehicles, the police vehicles, and the Police Department equipment. I'm sure if you've looked through there, you've seen the new equipment, tasers, bulletproof vests, new munitions, things of that nature. And what's becoming prevalent across the country, and by and large, it's a function of the economy kind of driving this, is that municipalities, for a long time, just said, okay, truck number five is set to be replaced this year, let's replace truck number five. But when the economy started getting tougher, they had to look where the majority, or big-ticket items were coming from. And they found that in a lot of cases, they were replacing vehicles that didn't specifically need to be replaced. They didn't know what was being replaced, what was in the upcoming years. So a lot of municipalities are moving towards, you know, giving their councils the full fleet replacement schedule, so that they can ask the question, see what's coming up in future years. So, with that in mind, that's what these, the next two pages after this, is the entire fleet roster with the five-year replacement schedule, with estimated costs on there, so you can see what's coming up over the next five years from the fleet replacement side. And since this is all wrapped into that fund, the Police Department equipment is in there too. The Police Department equipment, in and of itself, falls below the capitalization threshold. But it is in the Equipment Replacement, and there is a high concentration of turnover in those items. And it is a $50,000 on-average line item in the budget, which typically, we get questions on what's in there, what's not in there. So we felt it prudent through, since we're talking about the other half of the fund, to talk about this half of the fund at the same time. So that's the impetus for this. There's been a number of communities going to this, to watch their capital spending, make sure they're not, you know, being lemmings with the vehicle replacements, what's on the schedule, let's do it, and actually have some conversation about it, make sure that the replacement's warranted, there's no questions, things of that nature. So that's kind of where this came from. On the bottom, the funding sources, you can see even within the Equipment Replacement Fund, that's vehicles and some Police Department equipment, there's actually five different funding sources for the vehicles and the equipment. So, that's another thing to be mindful of, that it's not just coming from one place. It's pulling from different areas. Federal money, money from the court system, MFT money, and some money from the general fund as well, to get all of these items purchased and accomplished. So with that, we'll just move on to the next page, beginning of the fleet schedule. And so what we did was we took the roster from the Vehicle Maintenance Garage, and imported it into Excel, and took the latest version of the fleet replacement schedule that we had, and populated all of the numbers into it for the next five years. Obviously, what's gonna be in the budget you receive in a few weeks is just gonna be the 2014 column. So if we scroll down to that, you can see the four vehicles in the general, from the governmental side of things that are being replaced. Unit 233 is one of the snowplows, the backhoe, the street roller, and a light source, the light tower for Public Works. So that's what constitutes the $320,000.